The Aurora City Council Meeting for March 26th, 2019 is hereby called to order. Would the clerk please call the room?
Alderman Bowman.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Here.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Mervine.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshay.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven present.
Please rise, we have a moment of silence in honor of our active service men and service women, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be followed by Alderman Hartburns introducing Reverend Dr. Peter Spiro, who will provide the invocation. Moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On tonight, we have Reverend Dr. Peter Spiro to do the invocation. He's also the pastor for Alderman Ted Mesiacos, and many others that I do know. But, Dr. Peter, he's the head pastor for Saint Eustacia Church, and it's the Greek Orthodox churches in my board. And, he was ordained to the priesthood in 1996. But in 2002, Father Spiro was assigned to be the pastor of the Royal Church. And then in 2009, he was made the clergy of a higher rank, and in 2015. But, he has made the archpriest, in addition to being the pastor. Pastor Peter served as the chaplain for the Kane County Sheriff's Department for eight years, and for the Illinois State Police for five years. Yesterday, March 25th, the world celebrated Greek Independence Day, including our local Greek community. We are honored to have Father Dr. Peter Spiro with us, to lead us in the invocation on tonight. Would you please receive Pastor Dr. Priest Peter Spiro for the invocation?
My goodness, it's... If you could come on Sunday and introduce me for Coffee Hour, that would be great. If we can all bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for this evening, for gathering us together, to make decisions that are best for our city. We thank you for our mayor, all these elected officials, workers, volunteers, and all who are here this evening, along with the arms of the emergency personnel, who helped this city in so many ways. Their tireless efforts may be unheralded, and take it for granted, but the successes of this city are noticed and appreciated by all. We ask that you bless them, along with their families, so that they may continue to do all good things for your glory, and for the benefit of all the residents of Aurora. We take a moment to pause and reflection for those who have suffered in recent tragedies within the walls of our very own town. We remember them in prayer, and ask for your grace to come upon them, comforting and leading them throughout this difficult time. May we be resilient from our setbacks, prosperous in our every endeavor, and inspired to continue our work through the models of those around us. Grant us peaceful deliberations this evening, that we may be heard with the softness of our voice, and within the love of our hearts, so that our coworkers in this city will continue to walk hand in hand, as one city of Aurora. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Spiro. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, March 12th, 2019? Motion by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hartburns, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant of Arms for the nation? Motion by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hartburns, all those in favor?
Aye.
And a third by Alderman Bowman. Clerk, can you read the first item under presentation?
Item 19-0245, Presentation of Donations to the Aurora Strong Fund.
Alright, do I have a unanimous consent of the City Council to suspend the rules and consider item 19-0234 as part of presentation? Hearing no objection, and motion of second by Alderman Hartburns and Alderman Jenkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Clayton, when you do the presentation, the council will vote on the resolution.
Yes, Mayor, if you'd please come down, and the Aldermen would like to join, as we announce the Aurora Strong Fund. As you know, we've opened this fund on Saturday, February 16th, and throughout the last month and a half, there've been a number of community organizations who have had to contribute to the fund, as well as more than 2,000 individuals. Tonight, we will recognize two organizational efforts to strongly contribute to that fund, and one's here, and one who couldn't make it tonight, but we'll recognize them as well. So if any Aldermen would like to join. Tonight, we recognize the Sons of Amvet, of Amvet's Post 103, Two Low Flow Car Club, and Distinct Visual Solutions. We can ask, keep the check hidden there for now. The Aurora Strong, but to the mayor, so. Aurora Strong fundraiser, that they hosted included 13 different DJs, t-shirts, and food, and donations. Tonight, we have representative, if we can ask them to come down and join the mayor and the Alderman, Amvet's Operations Manager, Daniel Crane, Two Low Flow VP and Sons of Amvet Chaplain, Paulie, Two Low Flow President, Ron Stony Moore, and Distinct Visual Solutions rep in Amvet's member, and Two Low Flow Car Club member, Dominic Curtin. And ask, before we make the announcement, if Paulie, I would like to share a little bit about the presentation and the fundraiser.
I was just gonna say, it was unreal where everybody came together to help, from Bloomingdale to, I believe, Joliet, Oswego, and it took literally like a week and a half, and he's the guy that actually put it all together, I just helped him.
So Mayor, before we make the announcement, we have a couple of presentations. We have the Mayor's Award of Service to Amvet's Post 103, also to the Sons of Amvet, and the perspective of the Two Low Flow Car Club, and Distinct Visual Solutions. They raised a total...
They've raised a total, the Amvet's and the Low Flow Car Club, of $12,154.
One more big round of applause for Amvet's. Thank you so much, gentlemen. If the Aldermen can still stay with the mayor? We have one more presentation. Oh, thank you. Let me actual check itself. Tonight, the individuals, Justin and Michelle Sather from the Sather Foundation, could not be with us. They are on vacation in Miami, and they said they appreciate the support, and they love you guys, and they'll see you when they get back, it's their sun spring break. But they organized the Bowling for Aurora Strong fundraiser, on Monday, March 4th, at Parkside Lanes. More than 300 people participated from all over Aurora and nearby communities. They had bowling specials, raffles and prizes, and surprise guests for kids, and an appearance by the PBA Pro Bowler Sean Rash, and they raised a total...
Twenty thousand dollars.
Well, as of tonight, to the Aurora City Council, and the greater Aurora community, our Aurora Strong, Aurora Strong Community Fund is at $420,000. We're going to keep the online donations open until the end of the month, which is Sunday, and will continue to collect donations via check throughout the month of April, to allow schools and churches and other organizations to complete a number of fundraisers that they have scheduled. So thank you, Aurora. We have one motion, and then one final presentation after the motion.
Clerk, can you read the resolution?
Item 19-0234, a resolution authorizing the acceptance and disbursement of funds raised directly by the city of Aurora, and through the Aurora Strong GoFundMe account on an equal basis to the families of the victims, and the one surviving victim of the Pratt Industries shooting incident.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Yes.
It's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions, clerk, will you please call the room?
Alderman Bowman.
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Mervine.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshay.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. One more round of applause.
We do want to have this opportunity to have Father Spiro here without acknowledging some of the work that he and the congregation have done. If the mayor can come down, as Alderman can come down with the church, and of course, Alderman Mesiacos, and any Aldermen would like to join us. We'd like to take this opportunity to once again thank Father Peter for the invocation, and congratulate him on serving the community for the past 17 years, and for the church for serving the community for 54 years. Two very important keynotes, as we said, yesterday was the 190th anniversary of Greek Independence Day, and as a city, we certainly acknowledge such an important occasion, and recognize the Greek community of Aurora for their contributions, since the mid 1940s up until this present day. Our chief of staff, come on down there, as well. Last week, we saw once again those contributions in action when the congregation came together to help one in need. With the spotlight on Hesit House and homelessness last week, with the arrival of Emilio Estevez in the premiere of his new movie, The Public, the church was already in action helping a resident of Hesit House become a former resident of Hesit House. Saint, at the Nations Church, last week, through the kindness of dozens of people, and with the help of about a dozen movers from the church, they were able to help one of our community members start his new life in his new apartment, including furnishing it with everything from furniture, to curtains, to blankets and towels, and a brand-new television. While at Hesit, this individual began to learn to play the acoustic guitar, so as a special gift, the congregation also purchased him his personally-selected guitar, so he can continue to learn and play. Tonight, we are joined by Father Spiro, Mr. Foltei Giordopoulos, the president of the parish council, and we proudly present the church with the mayor's award of service. If anybody would like to make any comments, please feel free.
Okay, so, the whole, I don't know if it was clear, but I teach guitar at Hesit House, so I'm the guitar teacher, so, it was, it's a beautiful ministry and extension of my ministry at the church to teach guitar. Been playing guitar since I was about eight years old, so, it's a, it's a great outreach and a good way to get to know people for who they are, and not come in with any stigmas or anything like that. So it was a wonderful opportunity to see this man transition from coming to Hesit House, to picking up a new love for guitar, and then eventually kind of ushering him into his new life. But, you know, this is not, this award is, and this recognition is not me, it's, my parish is very caring and loving, and we had a lot of volunteers. We have two of them here, our parish council president, Foltei, and Alex, who's right behind him, were instrumental in helping to get the furniture and things together, and coordinate a lot of the volunteers that we had. But, I think too, I would be remiss if I didn't mention all the people who work at Hesit House, over day after day after day, and have such love and patience in their heart to help. And, for those who are at Hesit House, I hope that whatever is written up today in the papers, or whatever acknowledges them, and my deep gratitude for their untiring and loving ministry, for those who are many times cast out and forgotten about by the general public, but not at Hesit House, and not through Saint Anthony's Church. So thank you again, may God bless each and every one of you, and if you are ever interested in supporting any of the ministry of learning music for the homeless, please let me know, because we're always looking for used guitars. So, a lot of times, people have guitars, they're sitting in the corner, they have them as items of decoration, but we use them, and we were able to, we've given out three different guitars now through the, since the beginning of the ministry. So, if you have one, let us know, we'll be more than glad to take it, even if it's in disrepair, we can fix it, and get it into the hands of someone who would appreciate it. So thank you very much. Alright, now it just looks cheap. Now it looks, now it looks Greek cheap, right? So we have our Greek Food Fest, there's a lot of people behind me who have been there, and maybe in front of me too, but if you would like to spread the word for the Food Fest, you can find it, all the information on our Facebook page.
Before we go on to the public comment portion of the agenda, Alderman Hartburns also put on a fundraiser on behalf of the family. Alderman, would you like to tell everyone?
Thank you, thank you so much. Mayor, I have to thank the Aurora City Council, for all their involvement as well, and the community. We raised money for the heroes and the she-ros of the community, our police and fire, and in a week's time, we were so fortunate to have raised over 15,000 dollars. And Alderman Donnell, Alderman Sherman, I'm sorry, Sherman, know why I'm laughing, and Alderman Mervine, and Bug, and Judd, they all came, and they had a chance to be a part of the presentation. But, there was a little kid that said a poem, and he really stoked the thunder. He let us really know what it is, to have police officers around and in our lives. His poem was so beautiful, but at the very end, he said, "I want to thank the officers that found the man that killed my mother." He was nine years old. To hear that, and his gift brought our amount with 30 cents, that's all he had. That 30 sent me more to me, because he gave it from his heart, too. When he put his 30 cents in there, he was saying, "Thank you." But, the Aurora community, religious community did not sell us, they gave money, and they were there to say to the officers, "Thank you." And when Officer Adam Kane, one of them that was injured, it knocked our socks off, right, Sean? It knocked our socks off, because he said he had to be there, even with the injuries that he had, and because of the strap metal in the eye, but he wanted to be there. But all the officer and the farmer that was there, all the proceeds would go to them, to their vest, whatever it may be. And, we know that Aurora is better, because we have the great men and women of our police and fire. We know that Aurora is better, because Aurora stood up strong to say, "We got to come together for this." And I say again, to all the heroes and she-ros, on our police and fire department, we say thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment, within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting. The first speaker is Tyler Tridici.
Mr. Tridici, you have three minutes to speak.
Mayor Irving, city council members, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Tyler Tridici, and I am an associate pastor at the Oasis Church in downtown Aurora, just up the street here. I would like to address a travesty that takes place in our city, and that is the legalized murder of preborn babies, through the procedure of abortion at places like Planned Parenthood. We are a city under the lordship of Christ, whether we recognize it or not, and we are commanded by God, and the Creator of the universe, to obey Him, worship Him, and put our faith and trust in Him and His ordinances. And one of those laws is, "Thou shalt not murder." When we willingly allow abortion to happen in this city, we are all participating in disobedience to Christ, even if only through passivity. He is the one who gives people life and all things, and He made from one man every nation of mankind to live on all the face of the earth, having determined their appointed times and nations and cities, that they would search for God. When we decide to unjustly end the life that God has created, we are guilty of murder, and are blaspheming the Author of life Himself. God is now declaring to us that all people everywhere should repent, turn from their sin, and rebellion against God, because He has fixed a day in which He will judge the world in righteousness through Jesus Christ, whom He has appointed, having given proof to all people by raising Christ from the dead. Aurora is a place of hope and protection for the refuge, a place that says it truly believes, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore," while I am calling Aurora now to be that same place of safety and hope for the babies that are legally murdered in this city every week by abortion. Aurora City Council members, Mayor Irving, today is the day, if you hear His voice, to repent from your sins and to follow Jesus Christ in love and obedience, to love the Lord your God with all your heart, mind, soul, and strength, and to love your neighbor, even your neighbors in the womb, even your preborn neighbors who cannot speak out for themselves this evening, those huddled masses in the wombs of their mothers yearning to breathe freely, love these as you love yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, do we have additional speaker?
Mary Ann Vincent.
Ms. Vincent, you have three minutes.
Okay. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, public comment, appreciate it. Also, it's exciting to see what the city has done, how we've come together. I was at the event that Shakita Hartburns had at Bell Cell, it was wonderful to, um, love and, and help them have better equipment, and I appreciated being at that fundraiser. I was here two weeks ago and asked a question, and hasn't been answered yet, so I've come again to ask. Wondering if there is a residency requirement for department heads, and if so, what is it? And, also if so, do we adhere to it? Thank you.
Thank you, clerk. Do we have any additional speakers?
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Mayor Appointments, can you read the first item under Mayor Appointments?
Item 19-0173, a resolution appointing Dr. Jamal Scott and Patrick Ruffalo as at-large representatives, reappointing Joe Henning, Christine Gerlich Weber, and Peter Aguilar as at-large representatives, and Bill Donnell as municipal representative to the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau's AACVG.
There's been a motion to approve this resolution by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Mervine. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions, will the clerk please call the room?
Alderman Bowman.
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Mervine.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshay.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Will clerk now please read the consent agenda in full?
Item 18-0903, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute the engineering services agreement in the amount of $52,801.28 with HR Green Incorporated for the Paramount Riverwalk Promenade Project Phase II Engineering. Item 19-0051, ordinance amending Articles 7 Criminal Nuisance Abatement and 8 Noise Abatement of Chapter 29 of the City Aurora Code of Ordinances. Item 19-0098, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 3 of the Code of Ordinances in City of Aurora entitled Alderman. Item 19-0133, a resolution to approve security reduction number 1 for Orchard 88 Industrial PH2. Item 19-0149, a resolution ratifying payment to Point B Communications for Public Relations, Marketing, Branding, and Communications Services for services rendered in 2018. Item 19-0153, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class C City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Nick and Mike Fresh Market LLC, doing business as El Palenque at 363 North Barnesworth, Aurora, Illinois. Item 19-0154, a resolution to award the rental of crowd-controlled barricades for parades to United Rent Defense, Addison, Illinois. Item 19-0157, a resolution requesting approval for the Innovation and Core Services Department to submit a grant application to the Kane County Grand Victoria Riverboat Fund, seeking $35,709 for laptop computers and other technology for the soon-to-open Thrive Collaborative Center. Item 19-0158, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Geneva Construction Corporation, PO Box 998, Aurora, Illinois 60507, 0998, in the amount of $676,625.0 for the 2019 citywide paving patching for pavement patching for water and sewer maintenance. Item 19-0164, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for Aurora University Dining Hall. Item 19-0166, a resolution approving the City of Aurora Fourth Program Year 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report Paper for the Federal Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Act Home, and Energy Solutions Grant, ESG Programs. Item 19-0167, a resolution to approve security reduction number 1 for Orchard 88 Industrial Road Improvements. Item 19-0171, a resolution authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the city when the governing documents of a condo or homeowners association require the city's consent as a prerequisite to the association's adoption or recording of any amendments to such governing documents. Item 19-0175, a resolution, the acceptance of bid pricing from contractors for the mowing landscape maintenance for several city departments bid 19-01 for a two-year contract with a one-year optional extension. Item 19-0181, a resolution to award a contract to WBK Engineering LLC in the amount of $32,080 for the LOMR for the Fox River Floodway Project. Item 19-0183, ordinance approving the City of Aurora Downtown Tax Increment Financing District 9, Stulp Avenue Downtown area redevelopment project area redevelopment plan and project. Item 19-0186, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one additional and nine replacement vehicles for the City of Aurora fleet. Item 19-0187, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter agreements with Crescent Electric Supply, 517 South River Street, Aurora, Illinois, and Solar Max LED Incorporated, 30802 Street, Riverside, California, 92507, the amounts of $173,582.0 and $66,850.74 respectively for the purchase of LED streetlights. Item 19-0188, a resolution accepting the dedication of City Water Main Easement at 1155 through 1167 North Barnesworth Avenue. Item 19-0189, an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number 197, Aurora University Second Resubdivision, 347 South Gladstone Avenue, Aurora, Illinois, Kane County, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. Item 19-0190, an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number 198, Butterfield Phase 2 Unit 4B lots, 19401, 403, vacant lots, 2350 Frieder Lane, Aurora, Illinois, DuPage County, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. Item 19-0197, an ordinance designating the City of Aurora Downtown Tax Increment Financing District Number 9, Stulp Avenue Downtown area redevelopment project area. Item 19-0200, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the City of Aurora Downtown Tax Increment Financing District 9, Stulp Avenue Downtown area.
Been a motion by Alderman Hartburns to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any motions to remove any items, or any questions about the consent agenda? There being no motions or questions, will clerk please call the room?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Aziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
The motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Clerk, can you read the first item under unfinished business?
Item nineteen dash zero one five nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of video surveillance camera-related hardware, software, and professional installation services for the Alderman's offices under a national IPA purchasing contract in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars with CDWG Corporation of Burn Hill, Illinois.
Is there a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins? Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? Alderman LaFche?
So I brought this up. I just, it jumped out at me as being a little excessive. I understand we have to have the same type of cameras and everything, and, you know, like I said, it's based on national pricing, and like Marty Lyons said last week, maybe on the big, I'm sure on the big jobs that makes sense. I know it does for other things we do, but, um, I don't know. I just think in general, maybe we, I know our purchasing department may be a little shorthanded, but, uh, I just think that maybe on the small jobs, we could try and do local pricing. Apparently, the IT department thinks this is a fair price, so.
Alderman, Alderman Seville?
Yeah, could we have a short presentation by staff?
If I will.
About this again.
Mister, Mister Alexandra, step up. And also, I want you to address the purchasing department being short-staffed, which I don't think is the case why this amount was even determined.
Well, first of all, I think as, as, um, mentioned at COW, um, and has been consistently supported by our finance committee, and I certainly can allow our finance chair and members to speak, but we have used this type of cooperative purchasing before for a number of different types of purchases, uh, but specifically, we have a track record, positive track record of, um, of purchasing these types of cameras on this particular platform throughout the city after many years of disparate purchases by department and different performances of, of camera standards. And again, our, um, main focus is to standardize the platform. Uh, if you look at a breakdown, and this is exactly what both our purchasing process and our staff went through in this particular case, and, uh, so advised the finance committee, and it was that you have a package here that includes hardware, software, licenses as part of the material cost, but also as part of the service that CDW will provide to not only install these cameras, but to, to sync them to our platform and sync them to our system. So this is why, uh, our purchasing process, uh, is as tight and organized and efficient as it is, regardless if it's a small purchase or a very large purchase. And so I think we have, in this case, shown, uh, in reality, the, um, total material cost, uh, was twelve thousand dollars. The, uh, labor price of sixteen thousand roughly includes the Genetek integration with our existing systems. And so that is something that you just can't purchase off the shelf. You can't, uh, take lightly because it's more than just purchasing the cameras themselves. Uh, and again, you all know, uh, with the advent of the internet and, uh, smartphones, and you're able to do all kinds of searches, um, you unfortunately can also take these things out of context. And so I think in this case, uh, our purchasing folks who, uh, we are not short-staffed, uh, in fact, they have done an outstanding job this year on a number of, uh, critical purchases, not just for IT, but for other departments and divisions, uh, but also our IT staff, uh, working hard on the goal of integration, uh, and, um, our Genetek cameras are now deployed throughout the city, and they've done, um, they've been very, very well received. Uh, I can remember when we first put the Genetek cameras in after years of the older models, the analog models, I think one of the first things that we did, we assisted the police in solving a crime down the street at the old Jano's using the Genetek camera that's on the corner of City Hall. So one small example of, you know, quality and, uh, the value of, uh, standardization. So I, um, I would again defer back to the finance committee who, uh, reviewed this with staff, uh, the proper way and made appropriate comments and moved it on to COW and moved it on now to city council for approval.
Alderman, Alderman, Alderman O'Connor?
Mr. Mayor, when, when you're called upon by Mister Alexandra to comment, you have to comment at this point, and I think in celebration of Greek Independence Day, I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, by the way, on that. Uh, I just wanted to, Mister Alexandra, I think summarized it very well in, in the process and the components here. I just wanted to emphasize that this is not an issue that has just come up. The issue itself has been discussed for a couple of years. It came to, uh, develop to fruition last fall as part of the budget in regard to placing it in the budget as a specific, uh, decision package in order for us to proceed. It developed further then with our director, Ms. Stubber, in regard to what was the specific, uh, components in working with IT, and laid that out in front of not only, uh, the, the committee, uh, but also just reviewing it with the Alderman in regard to, uh, through the office committee as to a decision in regard to doing this. So I wanted to emphasize that this has been a matter that's been under discussion for some time, and the committee, finally receiving it, understood completely the fact that we were looking at the direction we were going simply because of the nature of the program, because of the need for the linkage to our system already, and because of the fact that this, um, source for us to find, uh, the most appropriate price is one that is very large and very comprehensive, and it isn't just picking and choosing and looking around at what could be done, um, within our own area. I think it, it provided us with a, a direct, understandable, uh, you know, source for, you know, putting together what we needed to do. So I just wanted to emphasize that on top of the, uh, the comments made at this point, so.
Alderman Seville?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mayor, based on last week's presentation by staff and then this week as well, and the comments made by Alderman O'Connor, it makes perfect sense, I think, to proceed with this contract. Uh, um, we do need to have an interface, uh, with the rest of the system. We can't have, uh, a system that's kind of an island, uh, out there on its own. It doesn't make sense, uh, not to be able to communicate, uh, with the current system we have. And I think there's just been a, um, a little bit of misunderstanding out there that the cost of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars is more than just the cost of equipment, it's the cost of labor to install it as well. Uh, so I think that makes more sense to me, uh, and I think that's a, a reason to move forward. And, uh, of course, uh, we all want the Alderman's office to be safe there, and I think the system would go a long ways to making sure that installing cameras would, uh, help assist in that, uh, assist in that process, so.
Alderman Hartburns?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that when you look at safety, we know we can call the police, whereas you can't get the police before they get you. Our secretaries have been working in that office all this time, needing security. We have all kind of people come in. I mean, everybody may not know, but we have people come in, just sit down, won't leave. You have some that come in, they want to use your phone, they can't use the phone. You have some come in that's belligerent. Yet they come in with bikes, they come in with shopping carts, you have no idea who they are. But when they come in and take a seat and they won't leave, we need to be able to identify them some kind of way. But when you, I know one day I was there, they came with a shopping cart. When they're belligerent, they're belligerent. We need to be able to identify them. They need to be safe. The only way we know that they can be safe, one way for sure, is by having the cameras available, that they can always hit a panic button, and we'll be able to identify the person that's come in. I feel that we need, there's, a lot of us have cameras at our home. We do feel safe with the cameras at our home, but in this case, our secretaries and chief of staff need to be safe. They need to be safe. And I, I might be talking about no twenty-nine, I would do us fifty-nine. It don't matter the amount when it comes to safety. They need to be safe. They're there all day, every day. We're not there all day, every day, but they are there. And when you know what you know, you know what you know. Our girls need to be safe. And I just say that we need to go ahead on and vote on this thing and get this over with.
Before we do, um, Alderman, and I agree with you, we need to vote on it and pass this, but, um, Mister Alexandra, I need you to do me a favor and please comment a little further on Alderman LaFche's clear misstatement that personnel counts in the, um, in, in, personnel counts in the, uh, finance department affect, uh, practice and procedure that Aurora has been doing, accepted practice and procedure that Aurora's engaging in for, for years.
Certainly. I mean, we are not shorthanded. We are budgeted for a certain number in purchasing, and I believe all the positions are filled, correct, Linda and Jessica? And, um, the folks that are in there are all very experienced, uh, in their jobs. Uh, they've all done a great job. I don't know that there's not a department, however, that could not make the argument at times that they can always use more help, whether it's during busy season or regularly, but, uh, they are, um, valued and finance department's doing a great job. So I would, I, I don't know exactly what Alderman LaFche is referring to when he says they're shorthanded because all the positions authorized are.
Even if they were shorthanded, there's a practice and procedure that, that has to be followed regardless of how many people are in the finance department. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and again, purchasing is our conduit to assist our departments in following our proper purchasing procedure, whether it's an RFP, whether it's sole source, whether it's, um, uh, not quite to the level, but even with our, uh, rules and procedures, we always try and get multiple quotes when we can, and then they assist in putting together with the appropriate department the items that then come forward to the finance department. So that is all, that process, as long as I've been here, has always been a function, uh, solely for our professional staff. Um, and again, they cannot move on any purchases without budget authorization, without, you know, following the proper procedure, and that's exactly what was done in this case.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, Mayor?
Alderman Bog?
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate the fact that my colleague of the Tenth Ward is, is fiscally responsible, trying to look out for dollars, uh, that of course we spend on behalf of the taxpayers. However, uh, these items come before Chairman O'Connor and myself and the finance committee, uh, and we take a very long look at these things. We don't look at them lightly. Uh, I feel the staff does a, a good job. The finance committee is not shy about asking questions on things, and when these matters come up, uh, sometimes they come up on a national contract, sometimes they come up on a state contract. We ask the question about those things. Today, we had a matter that was coming up in a contract-type form, and it got pulled back, and staff decided we're going to pull this back. We are going to look at doing this locally. So we ask the questions on these different items, if it is appropriate to go national contract, state contract, uh, we ask if that is the appropriate, best way to do it, and if that is the best for the city. And I believe with this particular item, uh, it was vetted, we looked at the matter closely, and it was handled in the best manner, so.
Alderman LaFche?
So, uh, just to be clear, I totally agree with security. I was always for this. I told Sandy I was for this. I just thought the price was a little high. I read the bid, and there were two project managers, and like Alex said, we try and, you know, take all the bids and assemble them. Well, on this one, as far as I know, there was only one bid. It was on a national project, so I get it. I learned from this, um, but I do think we need to, uh, maybe on smaller jobs, look at pricing locally. That's all, so.
Mister Mayor, if I could just, for a point of clarification, uh, it may have been one bid, but it's a national cooperative bid that within that process was bid itself, and they received a number of competitive bids. So just so we are talking the same jargon, and in this case, the price of the actual equipment, the cameras, was very competitive at about twelve thousand dollars, but again, we always have professional installation of it so that it's installed right and integrates with our system. So that was the balance of the money that, that you saw, and it's what's before the council.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Aziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. All right, let's go on to new business clerk. Um, is there a motion to spin the rules to consider items in a new business? There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Seville. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Aziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor? Eleven A zero nades.
All right, uh, will you read the, uh, first, read, read the first item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero two three eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of a revised real estate purchase and development agreement with Mora Asian Fusion Bull and Rock LLC to facilitate the redevelopment of certain real property located at forty-three East Galena Avenue in the City of Aurora, commonly known as the Parkus Building.
Thank you, everybody. This is, uh, this motion has to do with, um, uh, modifying the, uh, sale contract, uh, to Asian Fusion Restaurant. It came about after, um, Mora was out there, uh, raising money for their restaurant, and some of the investors had some questions. Uh, what we were trying to do, um, was visualize what will happen on Galena ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, and provide the city with a right to buy back, uh, the property. And, um, as you can imagine, it was a fairly sophisticated, uh, negotiation, and what happened, it just got overly complicated and actually began bogging down the agreement. So the lawyers got together and decided that, um, something which is pretty obvious, that the municipality always has the right for eminent domain, so that if we find a reason, a compelling reason, to, um, buy back the property for a riverwalk reason or for whatever, we can do that, um, based on some valuation. So we decided to, uh, make that modification, and we request approval to do it. Um, there's some other nuances, I can go through it, but that's the essence of, uh, of, uh, this, uh, this resolution.
Are there any questions based on, uh, what Mister Debo stated?
So rather than, uh, discuss all the eventualities and the terms of what would happen in twenty years from now, and what formulas we would have to buy back the property, we now would simply rely on eminent domain, with the exception of two things. If for some reason that the restaurant did not open within a year, then we would just have the absolute right to buy it back and reimburse any costs, physical costs, in terms of what was spent in the building. And then within a six-year window, if the restaurant didn't open continuously, then we would also have the right to buy it back at the appraised value and reimbursing any costs, um, for things that were in the building and not could be taken out with them. So we, we kept in this idea of what would happen in one year or six years, but took out what would happen, for instance, in fifteen or eighteen years, because the investors started to think, well, is that your intent? Which really wasn't our intent, it was kind of a belt of suspenders, and it just took on a life of its own. So we figured the easiest thing to do was to do it, and we wanted to get this thing done because there's a six-day, day window now for them to raise the money, and that's important that they do that now so we can go ahead and get the restaurant open.
Any other questions? Um, Alderman, um, Mervine?
So David, if I understand correctly, essentially what we, let's put it all, uh, to put it all in context, we're, you know, we've been buying property on that whole square block for a number of years, um, with the intention of, of redeveloping it, whether we redevelop it for ourselves or in something else.
So rather than discuss all the eventualities and the terms of what would happen in twenty years from now, and what formulas we would have to buy back the property, we now would simply rely on eminent domain, with the exception of two things. If for some reason that the restaurant did not open within a year, then we would just have the absolute right to buy it back and reimburse any costs, physical costs, in terms of what was spent in the building. And then within a six-year window, if the restaurant didn't open continuously, then we would also have the right to buy it back at the appraised value and reimbursing any costs for things that were in the building and not could be taken out with them. So we, we kept in this idea of what would happen in one year or six years, but took out what would happen, for instance, in fifteen or eighteen years, because the investors started to think, well, is that your intent? Which really wasn't our intent, it was kind of a belt of suspenders, and it just took on a life of its own. So we figured the easiest thing to do was to do it, and we wanted to get this thing done because there's a six-day window now for them to raise the money, and that's important that they do that now so we can go ahead and get the restaurant.
Any other questions? Alderman Mervine?
So David, if I understand correctly, essentially what we, let's put it all, let's put it all in context. We're, you know, we've been buying property along that whole square block for a number of years with the intention of, of redeveloping it, whether we redevelop it for ourselves or in something else, okay? So the perspective here is that instead of saying that after a certain amount of time, you know, that we would have a, an option to be able to go in and reacquire that property, to be able to put together a whole package for what we've been doing, you know, up to this point, then, we're, we're going to then rely on essentially our tool of last resort, which is eminent domain. Is that kind of where we're getting at at this point?
Because what we had in the contract was, and I know Alderman LaFche actually questioned how we could do this, but, meaning whether that would be saleable, but we had a perpetual right, so we had a fiftier right, that at some point, if we just wanted, we would say, okay, it's time, we, we want it, and they would, it was a formula as to how they would do it. It just got complicated, but yes, we would be.
And I realize that it can be complicated. I mean, it can be complicated from a financial point of view as they found out, because people that are going to loan them money want to know that they're, they're going to be able to get their money back and not have it interrupted because.
Correct.
A city government decides it wants to reacquire the thing, so. I mean, it essentially just takes some of the tools out of our, out of our quiver at that point, but, you know, the, the only, from my perspective, the only positive here is that it's at the end of the, the block, and could, could also be easily incorporated into anything we might want to do or a developer might want to do, so that it could continue on at that point, you know? I'm going to support this, but I, I think, I think there's, I think this is one of those interesting conundrums that after you go through for many, many years trying to acquire all that property, the reality is, is that, you know, we really only have one tool to be able to, in our, in our toolbox at this point, and that's eminent domain in those situations, so. Now, I'm going to support this, I, I think, I like the idea of, of the restaurant, you know, roll the dice to a certain extent and say that it's going to be around for quite a while, and, and whatever we end up deciding to do there along that whole block, maybe it could be incorporated in the, in the future, so.
Mister Alexandra?
Just one point along those lines. I think at the onset, I want to give credit to our economic development staff and also our Aldermen, because we did, in the crafting of this agreement and language, an earnest attempt was made to address some concerns that had been raised about what happens if down the line, the building doesn't quite live up to the original intent of this agreement. So I, I think there should be some credit given to staff to try and get creative, and at the time, it sounded like, you know, it was approved by council and we moved forward, but I think as the developer worked with the language and talked to us, I think it became apparent that our intent and how the language turned out just wasn't driving together right. And so we've always had that eminent domain right, and Alderman Mervine is correct, it is considered a tool of last resort, but that doesn't mean that even if we alter it now, that we still don't have the ability for good old-fashioned negotiation, knowing that at the end of the day, there is the eminent domain sort of out there. But at the end, eminent domain judicially sets at some point a cost for the person, for the person's property. We all hope that this is a very, we anticipate this can be a very successful development, and we'll never even get to it. So when Dave says belts and suspenders, I think we're just looking to change the belt and change the suspenders, but just in a different color and, and scheme, so. That was for you, Alderman.
I just want to make one more point, just maybe as, if we could take this opportunity and make a general point. You know, I'm looking around at the council, and I know that, I know Alderman LaFche, of course, Alderman Jenkins, Alderman Mesiacos, a lot of you have been involved in real estate and transactions and so on, and when things change, I, I, from my experience, you know, one or two things are happening. You know, there's a, a sinister, there could be a sinister side, and maybe somebody's trying to take advantage, or there's that side of it. Or the other side is reality is coming in, and, and it's a good thing when reality comes, because a lot of deals, you start moving, and you almost want the shoe to drop so that you could say, okay, somebody's really thinking about this thing.